Good evening. I would like to open this public session of the Bristol Warren Regional School Committee. It is Monday, September 15th at 7:02 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to seal the executive session minutes from today, September 15th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is our public comment, and we have one person tonight, Ms. Sheridan. Just as a friendly reminder, we have 15 minutes total, and we ask three minutes per person. Thank you.
Each year, our district recognizes and honors a teacher for outstanding contributions in their profession as educators and a staff member who helps our students achieve their academic goals and social well-being. As many of you know, in addition to the wonderful work our teachers do, our parent volunteers also play a special role in our students' lives. Through volunteering in the classroom, after school, and on the PTO, parents help to build community within our schools. Last year, the Guitarrist School in Bristol Warren community lost a treasured volunteer, a parent who not only unselfishly gave her time, talents, and energy, but a woman who seemed almost superhuman. From chairing our annual holiday shop, spring glow dance, and fall movie night, to collaborating with PTO officers to run the fifth grade moving up ceremony, family skate night, year-end celebration, Dells on the last day of school, to taking on the work of co-treasurer, to serving as one of the point persons overseeing the administrative tasks for both our GPAC Intro to Theater class and Guitarrist Performing Arts Committee 2024 production of Schoolhouse Rock Live Junior. Her energy, creativity, and drive helped us pull these special and memorable events off successfully. But beyond the many tasks was a heart that was pure. She cared deeply for the safety and well-being of each child who was blessed to have been in her care. I have volunteered with many individuals across organizations for over 30 years, and rarely do you encounter and work alongside an individual who truly understands the spirit, dedication, and mission of volunteering, as Patricia Martins Hawkins did. Though I'm speaking it rather acutely about her recent time at Guitarrist, Tricia was the mother of four children who have gone through the district, and her volunteer efforts are far-reaching. I am here this evening to humbly request that the Bristol Warren Regional School District create an award that recognizes and honors an outstanding volunteer in our schools, that it be named in memory of Patricia, and to invite a member of her family to serve on the steering committee that develops the criteria and selects the individuals for this award. I will also pledge my time to volunteer if needed. Tricia was a true volunteer, a parent who went above and beyond, a team player who gave of herself in so many ways. What a meaningful way to honor her efforts and memory while celebrating the contributions of those who follow in her footsteps, giving all they can back to our district. Tricia once confided that, quote-unquote, "she wanted to give all that she could until she couldn't." Although we never could have imagined there would be a day she wouldn't be with us, she certainly honored her promise to her children and the children of the former Guitarrist Elementary. I appreciate your consideration. I look forward to your response very soon, and I will also send a copy of this statement to you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I would ask the school committee to join me in front so we can celebrate some accolades from across our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So every year, we ask for nominations for District Teacher of the Year. There is a selection committee made up of teachers, the previous teacher of the year, and principals, and folks from the leadership team, and we take nominations from teachers, parents, anyone across the district can make a nomination. We ask them to look at folks who meet this criteria of taking on leadership roles, being student-centered, contributing to problem-solving, and offering innovative solutions, looking for learning opportunities for themselves, and contributing to a positive school culture. Someone who collaborates with teachers, admin, and families, and has high expectations for themselves and others. And I'm going to share just a few things that were in the nominations for this person's selection. There is something uniquely special about their approach. They combine empathy with professionalism in a way that feels nothing short of magical. They don't work alone. They lead a coordinated effort with speech and language, nurse, occupational therapist, physical therapist, the psychologist, program coordinators, and myself as a parent. Their ability to bring everyone together, communicate clearly, and find meaningful solutions has been nothing short of remarkable. This person has an ability to connect with all children, making each one feel valued, understood, and important. Their care and commitment go beyond professional responsibility. They reflect the deep compassion and dedication that truly changes lives. What sets this person apart is their honesty, transparency, and unwavering integrity.
Next up, we would just like to recognize one of our own school committee members, Margaret Richards, who has just graduated from the Rhode Island Association of School Committee Leadership Academy. So congratulations. And for our final award or recognition tonight, I'm going to pass the mic to Tom DiPaolo from RISA.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank you and members of the school committee, and actually, I'd like to thank all of you here for giving us a couple of minutes. This year, the Rhode Island School Superintendent's Association selected Anna Riley as our twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six superintendent of the year. Now, the way we do this in Rhode Island, historically, our parent organization is the American Association of School Administrators, and so we use the same criteria to determine who will be selected each year as the school superintendent of the year here in Rhode Island. And this year, it was very correctly and very, very accurately Anna was our selection for that. Among some of the criteria have to do with instructional leadership and commitment to kids. That's kind of the overall blanket of responsibility. And I think as most of the people here know, it's a, the job is very challenging with a lot of difficult priorities to balance. And Anna has proven over the years that she is more than up to that task, and certainly has replicated all of that work here in Bristol Warren. So with that, by the way, I'm joined tonight by the, I serve as executive director of the association, and I'm joined by my colleague, Tim Ryan, who's a former director, and he works as our legislative liaison. I'm also joined by my wife, Nadine, who can't believe that I'm still doing this after all these years. But in any event, I've been noticing the banners, and the one for respect particularly got my attention as a Yankees fan. Respect is often associated with Derek Jeter, and honestly, Anna, that's how all of your colleagues told you, with their respect. So congratulations.
Thank you very much for coming and celebrating with us. Thank you. Next up, I'm going to call PMA for an update on our capital project. Okay, I think we are ready to hear from PMA. So Nick, the floor is yours.
Thank you for having us this evening. So for those of you that don't know, my name's Nicole. I work for PMA, the owner's project manager for the Bristol Warren District. Joined with Chris Lefter, also with PMA, and then Joe Calatup from Percancies. So tonight, we're just going to run through a quick update of the construction progress and schedule update and the next steps. So we'll jump right into the construction or the cash flow. So right here, you can see the total project budget, one hundred and eighty-six million. Built-to-date is seventeen million. We actually just got freight's final rec today and sent that to the district for processing. So pay-go reimbursement is roughly seven million dollars. We just got one of those from Ride. So this is all current and up-to-date, and this tracks through the rest of the project. Contingency, so right now, we just track the contingency spend versus the timeline of the project. So we're, can't even read that, roughly eight percent through the project, and we actually have zero spent in contingency right now. We haven't gotten a change order yet. But you can see on the chart there, we're tracking current exposure of twenty percent, which is the audio enhancement systems that were an alternate that we decided to just keep on the change log. Do you have a question, Nikki?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, so that's just roughly, I think it was two million dollars for the audio enhancement, so we just decided to keep that on there in case, you know, at the end of the project, we have some savings, we can bring it back in.
So basically, you're, I'm sorry, you're basically measuring risk to contingency at this point?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll jump into a construction update. So these are the tennis courts in that back parking lot area being ripped up. So basically, this presentation starts from oldest and jumps into the newest. So everything at the end is newer. This is right on Chestnut Street. This is where our site trailers are. Since then, the fence is set up and all that. Now, so you can see the trailers being delivered. Now, you can see the erosion control that's set up all the way around the site, so one hundred, one hundred percent of the site has this around it, so it's just the silt sack, the fence, it just keeps all the sediment and stuff on-site. This is another picture of that back parking lot, so once they scraped it all up, and see they're almost done here. These are one of the sheds out back that was demoed, removed, and that's still in that back parking lot. This is right where the freshman building is, freshman academy, or it will be. These are the back field areas there, that was the softball field. You can see the demo work that's been going on. This is the temporary parking lot that's completed now in front of the high school, so we're able to clear all the trees, scrub all the grass, and give the district back some parking spaces, so that's been working out great. This is the construction entrance, so they have a big swinging gate there that gets locked every night when we leave, and then the stone just keeps the wheels clean as they leave the site, so hopefully we don't drag too much dirt into the road. This is the entrance to get up towards the building, so the building sits at the top of this, and this is just site access for everyone to get up there. From here, this is the whole back area cleared out, so this is pre-foundation digging, so this is just basically, they cut everything down to where they need to be, and then they started digging to put the foundation in the ground. This, you can see here, is actually in C building, so it's the far northwest corner. You can just see they have the foundation staked out, and they put stone and muraffi down just to help support the building and drainage. Right here is the next step, they put in some forms, so that's what holds the concrete, and then they'll put rebar in after. So this is what the forms look like with rebar in there, so then this gets signed off and inspected, and then they place concrete in there. This is a section of D building. You can see here they have walls formed, so once they form the footing, then they form the wall on top, and they have the rebar continuous. So that's just showing you the different forms they have. This is a spread footing on the inside of the building, so those four bolts you see there will support a steel beam, or a steel column, actually, and they'll set it right on there. This is what the wall and the footings look like when they strip the forms off, so you can see the brick shelf there, too, which will hold the facade of the building up. That's also in C building. This is the temp lot out front getting paved. The next slide will show the striping. Yeah, so this is what the striping looks like, so we've heard, you know, feedback from the district, and everything's been working out. We'll move on to Hugh Cole from there. So this is them milling the loop road out back of Hugh Cole. This is after it was paved. This is the front drive loop that you can see that got redone, came out very nice, and you can see the fire lane got striped with the arrows, so it's been going good. Move to the inside of the building, so this is what it looked like over the summer. We built this poly wall so they could build a new wall on the inside so that we can have our workspace separate from the school, so everything can happen inside, the kids aren't bothered, and then that gets ripped down. This is the inside of the space, so you can see they have the ceiling dripped out. They're just doing demo work, and we're starting abatement soon. There we go, this is just another picture of the inside there, so you can see they basically stripped everything out. This is the hallway from the other side, so you can see that's the wall that we built there on the right, so you can see, can barely even tell that there's going to be construction going on the other side. This is outside of our project, but this is Rockwell. This was the grant work that happened, so you can see they put in a new resilient play area, and they stone pathways, and some vaults, and some woodchips. And that's just the resilient right there. And I think that's, one more slide, yeah. So schedule, just a brief overview, so we award the contract in June. The groundbreaking ceremony is August fourteenth. That was great, and a lot of people came out. The steel erection date on here shows January twenty-two-six, which is what Parade showed on their schedule, but we're actually having a steel kickoff meeting next week, and they're hoping for middle of October for steel, so moving quick. Yeah, and then Phase One date is the substantial completion date is May twenty-eighth, twenty-two-seven, and then Phase Two is the end of the year, twenty-two-seven. And then the CIP projects, you can see, it's Colt Andrews and Rockwell are August of twenty-two-seven, and then KMS and Hugh Cole are August of twenty-six. So that's just based on lead times and what work needed to happen, needed to happen in certain time periods so that we can, you know, shift kids around and do whatever we need to do. And that's basically it. Any questions?
Ms. Ferrera.
Thank you. I don't know if this will necessarily be something for you to answer, or maybe Superintendent Riley, but I noticed KMS has a date of August twenty-eighth of twenty-two-six. If the plan is still for fifth graders to move up to the middle school next year, is that the date that you plan to have any work done and completed by for that move?
So that's what all of the work has to be done? So there might be, we might be able to do a certain work to get the kids over there first, that's just the, like, they have to be totally wrapped up at KMS by that date.
Okay. And then, similar to what was done for the closing of Guitarrist, is there going to be a floor plan of KMS to share with parents so that those that are concerned about their kids intermingling with eighth graders are rest assured that there's not going to be any mingling, because from what I'm hearing from staff is that, like, art is going to be in the middle of fifth grade class. Because from what I'm hearing from staff is that, like, art is going to be in the middle of fifth grade classrooms. I don't know if that's a rumor or truth, but just wanted to understand if there's gonna be some sort of floor plan that will be shared with parents soon.
So I have asked Mr. Morrell to prepare a timeline and an update for our October meeting of what's been happening and the plan for the rest of the year kind of sketched out in a timeline for everyone. So they will, he is planning parent meetings and opportunities for parents to provide input and feedback. So we definitely can put together, we have a floor map. Now, one of the things that we talked about when we said we'll have fifth and sixth grade on one floor and seventh and eighth grade on the other floor, we can't move the library, the cafeteria, the art rooms, the music rooms. Those exist where they exist. So kids will move in and out, but the art rooms are actually in one corner. So they're not like in the middle.
So they're not separating fifth grade classrooms from what I'm hearing?
No. So there are only, the same art teachers teach all four, will teach all four grades. So those are spaces that will be used by everyone. I don't know what the schedule will look like yet. Maybe Mr. Morrell can speak to that. They do not have a schedule completed. He started meeting with fifth and sixth grade teachers over the summer on our professional learning day. He had some time with fifth and sixth grade teachers again. So right now, they're very focused just on curriculum and what that will look like when they partner together as fifth and sixth grade teams. So they haven't moved to kind of the minutia of what will a schedule look like? How will we move from this area to that area? That will come. They're focusing on the big stuff first. Let's figure out the curriculum and how we can prepare for that, and then they'll work through the details. But he's going to provide a timeline for us at the October meeting.
Okay. And do all the schools know that fifth grade is moving up to the middle school next year?
All of our staff knows that's happening. I'm not, we have, we have said it publicly quite a few times. We can have the principals just as, you know, when they do their updates, do some reminders, but...
I think that would be helpful, only because I, I asked the Colt Andrews PTO what their plan was for the fourth graders in terms of a moving up ceremony. And the response back I got was, well, we don't know what's happening with the fourth grade, so we haven't planned that yet. So that's why I was asking.
I heard something similar from another pair of, another PTO that got the same response.
So that's something we can actually help with, too, because we're gonna get a construction schedule from Brae for the other CIP projects. I think we just got KMS this week. So we approved the high school schedule just preliminarily. It's with our schedule team. So they'll do a full in-depth review. And then, once we get the other schedules, we'll do the same thing. And we can work with the district to figure out when all the work's gonna take place, when that's gonna happen, and we'll get you a good timeline.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Richards?
Yeah, I have a, I, I think, like, month by month, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to become fluent in the monthly cash flow updates. Visualization.
Sure. Do you want me to get back to it?
And yeah, if you don't mind. I just want, one, I guess, a basic question is, one thing I would like to this is showing kind of the actual versus projection at any given time, showing the cumulative. One thing I don't see, and I think it's gonna get more and more important as bigger pieces and more expensive pieces of work happen, is are those, to the, I guess I'm wondering, do the, do the forecasts, are the forecasts changing so over time? So like, everything that's, anything that's the forecasted, so that's the, the forecasted district out-of-pocket costs, the cumulative.
The forecast won't change. You can see, actually, the red bar is the actual spent for August. So see how we're forecasting much higher than that before? That's because of the Bristol planning delay. We didn't start construction until two months later, so the forecast doesn't change. But we expect that it'll round out and it'll even out.
So the forecast, I mean, and is the forecasting not changed because someone is looking at and saying, nope, we're still forecasted correctly? Or is it just like, nope, that's our forecast, and we're sticking to it? That's the kind of thing that I would be able to, like, look at, is being, and you can't tell from this, is if, you know, you see a lot of, it looks in the beginning phases, you know, there's a lot of, we're, we're below, a lot of our actuals are lower than everything. At some point, that's gonna
Yeah, so it'll
There're gonna be some red spikes that are gonna go higher, and that's gonna start making everybody looking at this like, whoa. So, you know, I, I was, you know, being able to see how, uh, yeah, just knowing more about how, how the, how the forecasts are just, I mean, again, like you said, we had a delay. So that should adjust that, how the forecasting looks. And I do see a slight adjustment. I, I, the last one I could find was from June, I think. And I do see some, some adjustments in the out-of-pocket cumulative, just like for a given month.
I mean, that's something we can work on. We can have it out. This is as updated as we're gonna have for, obviously, right now. But, so you can see the beginning of construction is usually the heavy cost. So when the G C mobilizes, it's all the site costs, all the insurances, the general conditions, general requirements. So that stuff's not gonna change. It just might be spread out over two months instead of that big one month that you see. The next big thing will be structural steel. So once we start, the general contractor starts buying steel, you'll see that spike. But these are, these are pretty typical for our construction cash flows. We track them out basically the same way for all the projects. We know when the big items are, when they're gonna come, and that's how they track on the months.
But shouldn't we be seeing, for example, like, the, if, if an actual monthly is, has changed from, you know, July and August because of the delay you just mentioned, wouldn't that adjust what we're expecting them to spend in September?
If I understand correctly, you're, you're asking them, should they be
Re-forecasting?
Re-forecasting.
Yeah, because if we're spending in August and July, at some point, we're saying, okay, we're gonna have to spend more later because we shifted our timeline a little bit. Where is that?
That'll be, I guess that'll be in the actuals, but you're saying
That would, that should also shut, that, that the forecast, you would think, you'd say, okay, well, we're gonna shift
I understand what you're saying.
So the construction schedule hasn't changed. That's a part of it. So the construction timeline, other than, obviously, the month-to-month change, but the overall duration of the project hasn't changed. We haven't gone, you know, two or three months further because of where we started, if that makes sense?
That does make sense. I'm just trying to say, at some point, according to this, we're gonna have a huge red line somewhere to make up for all these little tiny red lines that are next to the big purple and yellow lines.
That's probably an accurate statement.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? Ms. Piper?
So I remember the last time there was a presentation, you guys were saying, which made sense, that the sort of holding your breath time is while you're digging, because that's where you don't know what we're gonna find. And once we're done with that and we're going up, it's more easy to predict. From these pictures, are we done with the digging?
We're probably sixty percent done digging. We've done most of C building, most of, all of D building is done. Some of the interior footings haven't. We started in E, and then they just started clearing in F. So F is the freshman wing in the far corner. So then it'll just be B and A, which are much smaller. But we're all the way straight, straight down to building F right now. We're coming back up. So there's probably, what, twenty percent left of the building to dig, I would say?
That's great.
Yeah.
And, and as a follow-up to that, I liked hearing that we might be, you know, maybe three months ahead in terms of the steel.
Yes.
And looking at this earlier, I was wondering, what is sort of the worst-case scenario in terms of weather and how that might delay? I imagine, obviously, you've built in for the worst-case scenario, but...
Yeah. So the, the biggest thing is getting the foundations in before the winter, because then they can start setting steel. The steel guys will work all winter regardless, unless there's obviously like a blizzard or something, they won't. But those guys just move project to project to project. They're already talking about working six, twelve-hour days. So they wanna be out of here faster than we even wanted to be out of here. So, yeah. We're not concerned with the steel guys. Just getting the foundations in before winter. Because then, you get into the instance where you're placing concrete in the winter, then you have to have temp heat and stuff like that, which is, nobody wants to deal with. So their goal is to have it all done before the winter.
So with only twenty percent-ish of the foundation left to build, we're well, we'll be well
To excavate. So they have probably, I think, most of D building is done, foundation, the footings and the walls. And then they've done some footings in C, some footings in B, small areas. So we're probably only forty percent through the concrete, but they're, they're digging way ahead so that they can have room to run.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Just as maybe a point of order, what they're, and I, I guess I know because I've seen a little more details, they're referencing the, the high school footprint broken into letters. So I think maybe moving forward in the presentation, if you could just kind of share that.
Yeah, I could get a floor plan in there.
Yeah, basically, what they've just kind of segmented the building into A through F. So when they're talking about that, you know, it probably doesn't make sense. So I just think, moving forward, if we could just include that, so we all understand what we're talking about, and then we'll become very familiar with, oh, F is the gym, let's just say, versus the theater, versus, to your point, some of the more stuff. Just maybe going along with, you know, the risk being on the site. I think since we started this project, you know, we've really been aware that the risk is on the site, not just from, you know, concerns about water runoff and the existing mitigation versus the future, but also, you know, we have an existing building that, right, floods or water runs through. And that's been a constant theme of, how do you make sure we're doing it right? And I think right now, we're in a situation where the things we're doing now, we need to be a hundred percent right. So could you talk a little bit about some of the work PMA is doing on, maybe who's on site? And what are some of the, maybe the quality control things that are taking place so that we know that what we've said and what Perkins Eastman has put on a plan that we're executing that?
Sure. So onsite daily is Chris and myself, five days a week. Chad and Walter, you guys have met, they, they're in and out two or three times a week. Perkins Eastman comes for the weekly site meetings. They do their site walks. Their engineers come out monthly. Along with PMA, we have a third-party inspection company that inspects all the rebar, all the forms before they place concrete. So that's another assurance there that everything is done for the building codes and specs. Joe and his engineers, we actually have, sorry, we have Par onsite every day, which is the geotech engineer, and they witness all the bottom of footings. So they strip it down. The engineer says, yep, it looks good. You guys can come back up now. So they're onsite with us daily. So there is plenty of entrances there for people. Yeah, we do concrete testing, too. So when the concrete comes, we have a guy, he takes a load out of the truck, and he does a sample, make sure slump in the air and the water content is all appropriate. So then that'll continue throughout the whole project. So once steel starts and they start erecting steel, we'll actually inspect the steel as well. We'll look at the moment welds. We'll look at the, make sure all the bolts are snapped, make sure there's no missing bolts, that sort of thing. So PMA, I guess, plays a big role in that, just managing our third-party testing company doing that, and we'll continue to do that the whole project.
Thank you. So if I'm here and maybe boiling it down, Par, who's our site engineer, they have someone on site who's just kind of verifying all these footings and pores to make sure that not only is it dug in the right location, but the sub-aggregate, whatever you wanna call it, is actually what it is.
They inspect the subgrade, yeah.
That's excellent to hear. And could you talk a little bit about outside of that, from the trades perspective, who's coming onsite? And are there any sort of, like, verification going on to make sure that the people on site are who they are, just kind of thinking about being in consideration of a school?
Sure. For like, the quarry process and stuff, the BCI process?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Oh, so Brae has, I, you know, you have to go to work, you get the sticker. So Brae puts a sticker on everyone's hard hat that says their name, and has the Bristol Warren logo on it. So everyone on site should have one of those stickers, and you can verify just by looking at the hard hats. So they've been giving those out.
And that's some correlation to the BCI, you said?
Yes. Yep. So they have to go to Warwick, they have to do it in person, or I think you can mail it in or something. But when they show up, they go to Brae's trailer, they show their BCI form, and Brae gives them a sticker, and that's been going well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I appreciate it. We'll see you guys soon. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school committee and will be enacted by one motion. If anyone would like to pull something from consent, we can take it out and add it to the next section of discussion and/or possible action. Would anyone like to pull anything from consent? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll start our discussion and our possible action. We'll start with some policies, and we're gonna start with policy DJ, which is related, this is a first-read review related to purchasing. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, we'll start the discussion. Pretender Riley, do you wanna start it off?
So this was a policy that our CFO brought to my attention needed to be updated. There were quite a few outdated references in the old one, and also, there were missing pieces from some of our audits. So we had a lunch account audit, and we were missing some language in here that referred to that when we did our what was the other audit, Danielle?
Ride audited us.
When Ride audited us, yes. They also said we weren't stating enough of the joint purchase agreements, the interlocal cooperation. So you'll see a bunch of statutes and regulations at the end that have been added. And then, any updated language that was required, the minority women in business enterprise, that was something that was not in our policy but is required by law. So we had to add all of that in. The other big change that you'll see is procurement amount. So you see procurement is not to exceed an aggregate amount of ten thousand. That was always the language. And then the second language, which is for all other purchases, was five thousand. You see that's updated to eight thousand. We put, for your reference, in the backup, the law around how that's determined. So if you see, back in nineteen ninety-two, the law said, ten thousand dollars for construction and five thousand for all other purchases made in accordance with small purchase regulations. And then it says, this amount shall be increased or decreased annually with the Boston Regional Consumer Price Index. So you can see ours was never changed from nineteen ninety-two. So Danielle consulted with Riasbo, which is her organization, and some other districts. And eight thousand seemed to be the number that those who have been keeping up with this number were at, and so that's why we're proposing the eight thousand.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Ms. Piper?
Yes. On that note, how come the ten thousand hasn't gone up then? If the five went up to eight, but the ten has stayed the same?
I'm not sure why they haven't updated it, but I know other school districts didn't update that amount, which is why we didn't do that in this one. But we could increase it as well. I think we were trying to do a slow progression during the eight thousand.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was in cooperative and joint purchasing agreements paragraph on the first page. That ends with approval must be obtained by the superintendent, but it doesn't say who the approval should be obtained from.
That would be anybody using these types of purchasing agreements, like anyone putting in a requisition, so.
Our IT department comes to mind. They tend to be the ones who procure most of the items. Principals aren't really procuring unless they're buying an odd piece of equipment, that, a laminator for some, but that, we don't buy those every year. This is mostly IT, but they have to get approval from us when, if they use a cooperative. We have to know which cooperative they're using, how they found the number, and how they selected.
So should it say approval must be obtained from the superintendent? Because this says by, which is why I couldn't understand who you were. And I apologize, I wasn't able to be a policy. That's why I'm catching up now. Because, yeah, that, that implies that you're getting approval from someone. And that's why. Yeah, I am curious about the ten thousand, five thousand, eight thousand number. Because to me, if there's an index that's deciding how much it increases or decreases it by, it should be both numbers affected. I did look at some other districts randomly, and they all still, the ones I picked randomly still had ten and five. And of course, it makes sense that it's gone up since ninety-two, but to me, it doesn't make sense if only one of the numbers goes up. But that's, that was my
So we pulled Portsmouth, East Providence, Lincoln, and there's, they have the ten thousand, eight thousand. So nobody moved the ten thousand.
Lincoln still has five, because that's one of the ones I looked at.
No.
I pulled Lincoln, and it went up. Yeah. Oh, I looked today, and it just, it said five. Maybe it was an old
We have them at Policy Subcommittee.
Yeah, to me, it's weird that they both don't go up if it's on an index, but, yeah, that's fine. Those were my questions.
Ms. Elmeeder, do you have a question? Or comment, sorry? I just said or comment, I was clarifying.
I just, I guess I'm just uncomfortable how it's now just really going to be, sorry, really going to be the director of finance and the superintendent. I feel like nothing is going to come by the school committee until, like, after the fact type of situation. Like, the superintendent, it's crossed out, but in the first paragraph, the superintendent will be the purchasing agent of the school committee. So now it's basically the director of finance will be the purchasing agent of the superintendent. Is that how it's kind of going to be?
No, we're
That you guys will still all approve bids? This was just things outside of bids, which is the normal process. So you'll still go in front with RFPs, and you'll approve them like you are tonight. That won't change this process. It was more along the lines of using purchasing agreements and cooperatives.
So where in here does it show that it would still go through that process with the school committee? Isn't, am I, am I right in just saying that there's, this is just establishing that there's the school committee doesn't have to approve every single time someone requests that we want to spend a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars? You're saying this is adjusting the existing standard, saying, okay, if something gets, we've changed the, those existing standard, we're just, nothing's We're just, nothing's changing, it sounds like, other than the, the minimum amount. If something is over 10,000 or 8,000 in different cases, then it becomes our approval. Then then it comes to us and that's how it's always been. It just was a different threshold before. Am I interrupting that wrong? Yes. Yeah. So this isn't changed, anything, anything.
The only thing that changes is from five.
It's just, yeah, raising the amount to account for things that like $5,000 is a really tiny amount because it was set in 1992. Okay. I guess my, unless I'm missing it, my point is if it goes over that amount, I don't see where it says in here that it comes to the school committee. Like I just don't want to assume that, you know, and it.
So I think that's more in our procedures internally and not something that we were working on as well in reading.
I guess, I mean.
I also feel like it's in another policy.
Because I know it, it sounds like it's obvious it would come to us, but I would like it. So if it's in another policy, if it can be referenced in here.
Well, it's also, it's also Rhode Island general law. Like we can't approve anything above this amount. It has to come to the school committee. So we tagged the law in here, but I can, I can print that portion of the law.
I mean, what I'm looking at it, it's saying, you know, all procurement's value in excess of the 10,000 or the 8,000 are going through a public competitive sealed bid through request proposal process or using a competitive joint parts, purchasing agreement. I mean, that's when the school committee is involved, right? When we're having a competitive sealed bid, right? Is that something that we're doing that? So I guess, but to Ms. Almeida's point, if that's not saying it in black and white, is there some level of something that we can reference as saying, well, or you're saying it's the law, like is you saying that the law?
Also, we can review the policy. I think that's in another policy, actually. So I'm going to go back and, and review our other finance policies to see if this is in. We have a budget subcommittee meeting coming up, so we can put this on that budget subcommittee to look for the other reference.
Because it sounds like we just.
By Mary Ann, I'm not wrong. That's the law.
This is just saying what they can, they can approve up to the eight and the 10.
I understand that. No, I, I know, but I don't.
Yeah.
And it should be referenced then. So if someone just pulls this, it's clear. That anything over doesn't.
It's clear that a public competitive sealed bid for a proposal is going to be approved by the school committee. And it sounds like that already is the case. We just need to confirm that.
I think it is in another policy. We'll have to.
So that could be a possible reference.
Of the other finance policies for budget.
So it sounds like that would be the action. We're gonna, we're not, no one's asking to send it back. We're just looking to add this moving forward.
We can add it as a cross-reference. I can add that for the second read, the cross-reference to the other policy.
Thank you. It's only because sometimes things are interpreted and I would.
In isolation and they don't know the.
Right. And I, and I know it sounds silly, but I would rather it, everything be right there.
Ms. Richards.
Just add a sentence under purchasing limits. This is.
Let me see. I think there might be another policy and I'll just cross-reference it, but if not, we can add a line there.
Ms. Richards.
Thank you. The women, the minority women business enterprise section, I just want to, just wanted to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly. So this, um, it's a statewide standard that MBEs and WBE shall be awarded a minimum of 10% of the value value of the entire procurement of projects. So that's not, it's, we're not district, not beholden to that 10. We're not, we don't have a 10% threshold. This is at the state level. And that that paragraph is basically a lead up to explaining why we reserve the right to give additional consideration to bid proposals by small minority women business enterprises. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. And we also include in every one of our bid policies that MWE form as well. It's more just including that to make sure that we follow those standards, the state law.
But this, but well, but that's, the way it's written, it doesn't seem like that's, that's not a, what's the standard that we are, we are not required? The way this reads, we are not required to award a minimum of 10% of the dollar value of any procurement or project to an MBE or WBE.
So we're not required, it's, it's encouraged. So they want you to review that. If someone bids and they meet this criteria, they want you to rate that. So when you see our bids, you see our evaluation sheets, we go through and we have a criteria for how we evaluate each bid. So if someone were to meet this threshold, it's like extra points on their bid sheet. So if they have this, we want to encourage the, encourage use of women and minority businesses.
Right.
So the threshold is, I'll give you an example of a threshold. So right now Bray meets that threshold for us because they work with at least 10% of their contract goes to women or minority based.
And we're making that, um, again, we're, we are not, we are not required to award a minimum of 10%. It's just that this is how the state is finding out accountable to themselves to say, okay, we have set this policy internally. This is what our policies, we've got to spend 10%. We're asking the LEAs, for example, to track this for us. So we have a sentence to make sure that we're encouraging this. Okay. That's all I wanted to.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments related to this policy? Seeing none, I will bring it to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be policy IKEA. This is a first read renewal of a makeup opportunities. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Superintendent, would you like to kick this off here?
This is just a renewal. This is how we operate for makeup opportunities at each of our schools. We did not make any changes to this language.
Okay.
What's the cross out on it?
Uh, that, it's a wrong reference. The JED is, might've been one we already got rid of, so it didn't match up. So we took that one off.
And this is not in the handbooks, correct? That's why we actually have a policy.
Right. We have a policy because we did not, this is not in handbooks, but I'm actually going to ask, once you approve this policy, we're going to ask the principals to reference this in their handbooks.
Teachers are aware of it and parents.
It is the procedure we, we use, but, and it's our policy. It's our current policy. They just don't have it in the handbook. So once we approve this, I'm going to have them connect it to their handbooks.
As a point of reference, if we're renewing a policy without changes, we, do we still have to vote on it twice or do we just do it once?
You don't have to vote on it twice. You're not changing this at all.
No.
So this could actually be a final read.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Sorry, we didn't have Amanda, so I missed that.
It's all right. I just.
Final read.
One less to deal.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions related to this policy? Seeing none, I will bring it to the vote. And again, this will be the final read. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be the final read because it's a removal and it will be policy DLB and it'll be related to salary deductions. And again, even though it's one read, we can still discuss because it's a removal. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All right. Thank you. And just a quick once over of why we've decided to remove this?
Danielle?
Because we have to make these deductions. It's not a choice by people.
Okay. So it's just a rule, not a policy is what we're hearing. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments related to this or questions? Seeing none, I will bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be policy BCEA, School Building Subcommittee Review. This will be a first read. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. I'll pass it to the current chair of the School Building Subcommittee.
So this is just, uh, we updated this to match the ride regulations for what the requirements are for a school building committee. So any of the updates that you see here are just meant to align with what is required by the SBA.
So other than the language is just kind of putting the right role.
Yep. We updated the roles. Yep, that was it.
Does anyone have any questions related to this or comments? Ms. Barlow?
I just have a comment. Some, um, in subcommittee, I asked the question about, does this align with what we voted on a few months back related to the specific project and the dominoes that result? And I got confirmation that yes, it is. This is, these all work together. So if anybody remembers that conversation and wants to know why we're revisiting it, they fit.
Ms. Piper?
I just had one question. And if, if this is sort of standard from the SBA, maybe that's the answer. But in number two, where it says the bond attorney advises the school committee, et cetera, in all matters related. I felt it should say in all financial matters related because the bond attorney doesn't advise us on all matters related.
Well, this is only in relating to the school building committee, which only would be about the bond. You don't have a school building committee unless you have a bond.
But the school building committee discusses the architecture and the engineering and all sorts. And the school bond attorney doesn't advise that committee on those things, right?
No, but any legal advice we would.
Well, legal, right.
Wouldn't be the bond attorney.
Okay. To me, all matters, having sat through those meetings is not just legal or financial. It's a lot more than those things and.
I'm just thinking, we've never invited Mary Ann to come to one of those. Like when would we use someone not the bond attorney?
We've only used our bond attorney maybe two or three times to talk about the bond. But in all the other matters, we do not have an attorney.
So does the fact that it's just the bond attorney kind of designated as being relationship to the bond?
It's the all matters part related to a particular project is not accurate. Our bond attorney doesn't consult with us on all matters relating to the school construction project, right?
So you just want to add in legal?
Financial, legal.
It's not legal, it's financial. Okay.
That's, I had written, shouldn't it say all financial matters?
Either that or all matters related to the project.
This one, this is not, this language we already had in our, in our policy, not, yeah. So this, you can change it if you want. It's not part of the MSBA regs. This was language you already have. So if you want to change it to all financial matters, that's.
Well, you can, we can change like the last sentence to something like in all matters related to the project bond or the bond of the project. So it's specific.
Some clarification because we do not have a bond attorney at all of those school building committee meetings.
Right.
The issue is when it was all matters, you had school committee attorney.
Right.
So now that it's bond attorney, it's only financial matters.
Yeah.
So we're just going to add all financial matters.
Financial before matters.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be financial matters related to the project.
Yeah, it's already there. Just put financial.
Just say financial.
I just, yeah, we just can't afford to have the bond attorney advising us on all matters, which is what it says.
I'd like to cross that off and keep attorney. It's way cheaper. Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you very much.
I, I just had a question more on the roles and responsibilities of this. So I think I know the answer, but just as a clarification, the school building committee is basically the responsibility is of the capital project associated with a bond. Is that what you're saying? Or is it a capital project? I just like, does the school building committee? I guess I'm under the impression that the school building committee isn't responsible for the day-to-day maintenance of, of the school district. Or, or is that correct? Like that's what I'm just trying to understand. Is the building committee responsible for all facilities-related projects in the district? Or is it only, only oversight, their only responsibility related to the, a bond project?
Right. That's correct. Only to a bond project.
Okay. So that's, that's what that role responsibility lies to. Okay. Thank you.
I forgot to attach. There is a flow chart that just bullets these and I didn't attach it, so I will send it to you all.
Okay. So for BCEA, we just need an attachment for, before the file read.
It was an exhibit. I'll pull that.
Okay. If there are no other questions, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Richards.
Sorry. Um, number seven, the COO, the assistant supervisor and the maintenance team serve in an advisory capacity. Who's the assistant supervisor?
Anton Almeida. We just went, we just approved him in the last.
Assistant supervisor of what?
Maintenance.
That's, okay, I guess that was.
We can add that in. The maintenance.
Cause it's lowercase and everything. It just kind of seems.
That's fine. You can add maintenance in there.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will bring this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be policy EEC, School Bus No Idling Policy. This is a first read renewal. Can I have a motion, please?
If you're renewing again, it can be final.
Final, basically.
Okay. Because we didn't touch it?
Because we're just renewing it, yeah.
Okay, so.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Because I'm, I don't know them, Kyle or anyone who has a policy, sorry. The references, what are those in general? You don't have to go over each one, but what is it, you know? And if you don't know, that's fine. I just didn't, I was like, oh, it looks like they added references.
Rhode Island laws for buses.
Yes.
Okay, just.
So it's now required, if you remember, we had to show this when we applied for our bond, like it's required for NSBA projects, have to have this.
Were those references not previously?
Yeah, we just didn't have them listed, so we added them.
So just to correct myself, this is a renewal and will just be a single read.
Yep.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Are there any other questions related to this? Ms. Richards?
Just because I didn't double check this myself, but just because it says nothing's been changed. There's a, where's my tab? Sorry. The first. The rationale cites an asthma statistic. Is this an asthma statistic from 2005? And if so, should we check that we're up, we've got something that's current in there?
I'm sorry. Can you tell me where you're looking?
Under rationale.
Yep.
According to the EPA, it has all these, it has disinformation about the EPA. Diesel emissions, asthma is currently the number one cause of miss school days. The asthma affects more than 109 children in New England. If that hasn't been updated, I think that's, that's now 20-year-old information. It seems like it's about time to.
This is the, so if you look at the citation, it is still the current air pollution control regulation. Are you saying the medical pieces might need updating?
I'm just saying, yes, it's citing, it's, it's making, it's citing medical data.
You're talking about specifically 109 children in New England?
Well, it's got a cold, it's got, there's stuff, asthma is the number one cause of miss school days. Asthma affects 109 children. Diesel emissions are well documented asthma triggers. I just don't know if that's all current. Since they're saying this, we're just renewing this from 20 years ago. I'm just saying, is this all, actually, are those still facts? Or should we like make sure that we don't need to update that language?
Well, you don't need to have that rationale in there at all. You could delete all of that. That was your choice.
We have, we have to have the policy.
We have to have the policy.
Just get rid of it if you want.
That's what I'm saying. You can get rid of it. It could just, you could just end it as, it's a serious health hazard, period.
That's fine by me. Yeah. I just don't want to come back here 20 years from now and say, well, now we've got.
There's a whole other new list of things we could add here.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think taking it out is great. Okay.
So then it's a review, so.
So it's revision. So, okay. So we understand that'll be revision. Thank you.
And do you want me to remove the rest of that entire sentence to the, where it says 109 children in New England? Remember? Okay.
For what it's worth, a quick Google search says that statistic is still accurate. This is just a quick Google search.
Right.
So that's a change that we're going to make on that one. Ms. Almeida?
Just a general comment with any policies, because I'm not legal counsel, so I have no idea. For references, when it has the like, the Rhode Island law with the chapter and the section numbers, can the title of the law just be put, like it, it's not extra trouble. It's just whatever the title of the law is. Do you know what I'm saying?
Just to make.
Yeah. Cause I'm looking at it, Rhode Island general law, 2323 dash 29.2. Wow, that's great. What is that? Like, do I want to look it up? Do I not? I don't know. Like, do I care about that? You know what I mean? Just a title. If you're putting that anyway, I'm sure the title's right there.
I don't know how, I don't know how they're classified as titles.
I mean, this, you know, it could be transportation. It could be bus rules. I mean, there's certainly some.
Are they more like a couple of words or are they like long? Okay.
You just want the major title, not all the sections.
Oh, no, no, like what you have, but like Rhode Island general law. Sorry, Rhode Island general law, bus pollution and then the chapter and stuff. Like I don't know what any of these are. So if I need to look up something, am I going which one?
Probably a part of a law. I'm just thinking when you, when you go to look up, so chapter 16 is all of our laws. So they're all school law and then there are a million subsections underneath. Why don't, um, we can probably put them in when we just do the, the major header. You know what I mean?
That's what I, yeah.
And that'll give you the idea of what content, what the subject is, and you'll have to go to that section to get the detail, right?
And we can start playing with it and see.
As we do them. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Makes sense.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments related to this specific policy? Seeing none, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be policy GBCC, Anti-Fraud Policy and Organizational Code of Conduct. This will be a first read review. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
So Danielle did all the hard work on this one, so I'll let her go through it with you.
Yeah, I updated and cited general law were appropriate for us as well as kind of putting into work, formal context, some of the items where it was not as specific, such as just saying that employees should not be drinking or gambling or fighting. There are a number of things an employee should not be doing within the district as well as kickbacks and secret commissions and then with vendors. And then communicating with outside people as well, and making some legal references and creating the staff conduct.
Thank you. Does anyone have any specific questions or comments related to the changes in this policy? Ms. Piper?
I just had one, I think it's just a typo, the very top of the last page. I think that with whom the district has dealings should be erased. It says when handling financial and personal identifiable information.
Yep. Just erase the with whom the.
Yeah, because otherwise it reads when handling financial and personal, with whom the district has dealings.
We already said we don't deal with people, we forgot to get that one out.
Okay, so we can make that edit?
Communicate.
Thank you. Ms. Barlow?
Just a comment of thanks, this was clearly out of date and we discussed it in the subcommittee meeting. And I appreciate the edits that were made to add the umbrella of the general law that, like, all of these requirement, ethical requirements apply, and we're just picking out a few things to flag and highlight and discuss as the policy, but.
Thank you.
Good update.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions related to this? Seeing none, I will bring it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be the reference for this policy GBCC, and it is brand new.
Right, so it follows along with the section of the previous policy where, um, hold on. There's a, a reference to a list of some of the prohibited activities, although it's not exhaustive. So it is tagged in the policy, so Danielle put this together from, I think from looking at other people's policies, yes.
And I just thought the term neither exhaustive nor all-inclusive as well. So it's just like, here's a good summary, but it just because it's not on here, that doesn't mean that's the case. I just think it's more, just clarifying that, I think is very helpful. Does anyone else have any questions or comments related to this?
Yep. No, we did not get a motion.
Okay. Um, prior to Ms. Richard, may I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Richards, just continuing with our discussion.
Forgive me if this is, if I missed this in my reading of the previous document, what is the, where does it state the, the context for employee conduct when conducting school business at all times? While on school property, because part of, and part of the reason I'm asking is because there's been some cases in the state very recently about people's, you know, social media conduct. Things people said on social media affecting their jobs, and so I just wanted, I think it's, this is the right time to be really clear about when this is all relevant.
In the policy, we put at all times.
Every, every minute of every day. We also referenced our social media policy in this policy.
In that policy.
Yep, so if you look on the first page where it says general employee conduct, the district has established a set of rules that apply to all employees. These guidelines, while neither exhausting nor all-inclusive, are intended to outline expectations for professional behavior. And it says employees are expected to hear, adhere to these standards at all times, recognizing that this list serves us as a guide. So this is just a guide list. If you look, most of them are, most of them do pertain to workplace, there are some that go beyond that, but they are connected to the educator code of conduct, which is in law and in our policy. And we also have some of our other policies, so like the social media policy addresses some of these things.
Have we had, like, how often have issues related to these come up, I guess? Like, how often in a given year or school year do? Like, how do, I'm not sure how I'm trying to ask this, someone else has a question, go ahead, I.
Does anyone else have a question?
That's all right. No, I can't think of how to say it, it's okay.
Seeing no other questions or comments, um, can I have, we're going to take this to vote. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. And the last policy for tonight, which will be renewal, is going to be policy IGBG, tutoring or homebound instruction.
Yep, so this doesn't have any substantive corrections, there's just some language was not.
Yeah, I think we just want to mention, if you didn't look, make sure if you were looking at this earlier, it wasn't, the updated policy wasn't put in here, and then it didn't get updated until 3/26. So just make sure you're looking at the one, it's homebound tutoring, is the new name change.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, yeah, it was updated, it was updated in the folder, thank you. Okay.
No.
Can I have a motion to approve this, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any other questions related to this or comments to this renewal? Because it said, it just maybe looks like a couple little grammar updates.
Yeah.
Seeing none, I will bring it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next is a approval of a resolution for municipal lease. And if I understand our superintendent correctly, this is something we agreed upon last year in the budget season. We just need to actually formalize this resolution, is that correct?
So the bank requires a formal resolution of the school committee, but yes, when we built our budget, we talked about how we did not have the funding to buy all of the tech equipment that we needed for this year, and that our best option was to do it through a municipal lease, where we could build this into our budget over the next four years. Um, and we included, during budget time, we discussed IT and buying a truck. All of our vehicles are really mostly at end of life. We have only one relatively new trucks, most of our other trucks are, are really hanging on by a thread. So we thought we would use this opportunity with the lease to also purchase a vehicle for the next, each year, for the next four years.
And just again, to reiterate that, this is something we agreed upon at the budget, we're just formalizing, if you will.
Right, this resolution, like I said, is required by the bank.
Understood, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments related to this, Ms. Almeida?
I do not have the budget in front of me, so if Danielle or Carly could let me know. When we accepted the estimated cost, cost of 510,000, is 510,000 the actual number in the budget?
So it's actually, we're only, you're only accepting the cost of the lease payment, which was 145,000, so we're under budget.
Okay, because I was going to say, no, we didn't know the rate at the time per se. And when I did the four times the 135 payment, it was 543, so I didn't know if we were, if it was budgeted altogether for, you know, at once, like the total or just the payment part, and, okay.
Just the payment, yeah.
Okay, so now that we know that going forward, it's 135, when you do the budget next year, it'll go down a little because you put, well, you didn't do it next year.
It'll go to 270, well, it'll be the second year, it'll, you'll have to add on till you pay it off. Right?
Oh, except for annual estimated payment, so it.
It will be 135 next year.
But we're going to add another, so we have to, so remember, our, our plan is to add a lease annually to get to a four-year cycle, so we're back on track. So we're building that, that original number that we need in the budget, which is like 600,000, which we said we can't get to in one year. We're going to increase the budget over time to get to that 600, so with no more lease, we just have our 600 in the budget. So we will need another lease next year to buy tech equipment. So this will, can, it will go, it will happen for four years until we get to that 600,000, and then we'll stop leasing. The 600,000 will be in our budget, and that's about what we need to buy our tech equipment annually.
Okay, thank you.
So we're just working our way into that increment in the budget.
Any other questions or comments related to this? Seeing none, I will take it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next is an approval for a bid for junk removal related to, we're just going to call it equipment removal, related to Gittera School. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Motioned. Second.
Second, thank you. So just, it sounds like this is just us reviewing an RFP that went out for removal of some excess equipment and furniture in Gittera School.
Is that a misprint?
Nope.
I was like, maybe it's 70, like 7,000.
Well, I asked, I'm like, were they going to, like, make the building new again? I'm confused about that bid.
They showed up to the bid award.
Okay, okay.
And they didn't blink when we said all three amounts out loud.
Excellent. So just kind of summarizing that, that we are deciding to go with the lowest and sounds like with the references provided, qualified bidder who will then support us in getting, removing some of these excess things out of Gittera School. Does anyone have any question, other questions or comments related to this bid? Seeing none, I will bring it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next is going to be the approval of the memorial bench at Colt Andrews School.
Right, so just in following our policy, memorials all get approved by the school district. So I've outlined, they, there has been a group of, of former teachers and friends of Caitlin McKenna, who was Caitlin McKenna Viera, who was one of our teachers who passed away, and they would like to dedicate a memorial bench with a plaque in her name.
And just to clarify, this will be inside the school and not outside the school?
Um, no, they are asking for it to be outside of the school, where the kindergarten area.
Outside.
Once this gets approved, we will have to go to the historic commission and get permission.
Excellent, thank you, it's a great idea. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments or questions related to this?
As, as she taught, two of my children, Kate, so she's missed and loved and I'm glad that this is happening.
That's a great memorial. So seeing that, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next is going to be an approval for sending two school committee members to the annual NSBA conference in April. Again, something that we've had in the budget and something that we've done at least since I've been on the committee, which is a great opportunity. I think what we'd be doing is we're proposing two committees attend this year, and, um, just as general recommendation that we've had in the past, that if you are not planning on running for reelection next fall, because believe it or not, next fall is a reelection year, then we would just respectfully ask that you don't be considered. I think if it would be possible to understand who would like to go by the end of the week, Friday, and then we'll do what we've typically done, is just draw names out of a hat. So could I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions related to this or comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is not anything we're going to vote on, just a discussion related to legislative priorities. This is something that I think we've been doing for a few years, and we just have a, one or two times a year, sit down with our local legislative representatives and just kind of have a collaborative discussion about some of the things that we could see improved, or perhaps priorities we'd like to see discussed in the upcoming year. Just seeing in the, uh, the memo that was sent by our superintendent, there was just some discussion about continued conversation related to the transportation bill and something else related to the appropriate and consistent tuition for CTE schools statewide, rather. So just again, this is something that I think Kate recently just scheduled, I don't have the date of the.
It for November, so we still have our October meeting, so if you have any legislation that's come to you that we want to advocate for, that we want to add to this list, these are just the two that I had on my list. Certainly, any school committee member can submit to the committee for consideration anything else that we'd like to bring to our legislators, and then when we meet with them, we kind of review um, what we're asking for and then get feedback from them on where they think these might be in the queue, or if they're possible, or if we might want to think about some other strategy for what we want to attain.
So then the action would be, think about it, and then next month, we can send these informations either myself or the superintendent, and then next month, in October, we would basically
Vote on a list.
Vote on the list that we would then share, basically the agenda for that meeting in November. Any questions or comments related to that, Ms. Barlow?
I have one question on what the CTE, if you could share with us what the CTE proposal is, and because I think personally for one, for myself, one of the, um, things that has shocked me in my learning experience is the lack of special ed funding in a similar way, and so I'm curious to see what's proposed there, and then compare that to what might have been done in the past, or what we maybe should start talking about related to special ed in the state.
So that might be a piece of legislation we want to advocate for, is increasing the reimbursement on high-cost special education. That might be something that we want to add, ask our legislators about. But right now, CTE is basically up to the district, you're capped at a max by the state. They give you a number, like you can't exceed this number, but I'll tell you, so for example, any student of ours that goes to East Providence for a career in tech ed, they charge us the max. They look at what the Warren max is, and if it's a Warren resident, that's what they charge us. If it's a Bristol, they charge that max. But the East Bay group, so we have a couple of students at Portsmouth and at, we have someone in the cosmetology program at Newport. They have an East Bay agreement where they agree to charge one amount. So it's, it's, I think it's 15.5, so that's what they charge, no matter, regardless of what ours are, which is lower than both of our numbers that are assigned by the state. So the Northern Collaborative has actually agreed amongst themselves that they only charge $5,000 to each other. So it's, it's really kind of all over the place, and so, um, we're, we're, as an organization, RISA, and I think RIASK is also on, on board with this, which is let's set a reasonable tuition that speaks to instruction and not all of the other costs that go into a CTE program. Thank you.
Thank you. So that'll be our homework for the next month, think about it and submit, and then we'll discuss at our next meeting.
Can I just add that, for our newer members, that I think it's important to note that we try and keep it, there's no rule, but we try and keep it to sort of three items for discussion, just to sort of make it clear where our priorities are and to focus everybody. And the two that are on there, one of them in particular has been on there for three years. So yeah, just in sort of doing our homework, think about really focusing so that we're not asking for five million things and we get none of them, you know?
Thank you for that reminder and clarification. Ms. Richards?
How does this, is there, how does this, this, uh, the upcoming meeting we have and this list of priorities if in any way also allow for discussion of advocacy for federal policies? I know that this is a meeting within our, their state representatives that we're talking about. But, but, you know, where is there, have we in the past worked in any way to advocate at the federal level or express our priorities to our, our national level representatives?
We have not done that to date.
Okay.
Is that something that may be done more on like the RISA level or RIASK level? Is that something that, I guess I'm asking that question?
Or do other districts do that? Or does, you know?
I mean, I don't, I, I don't know that our federal delegation would turn up for something like this at a district level. I do think that that, to Superintendent Riley's point, would be more of a RIASK thing, and where they would, and, and at the last RIASK thing, we did have Jack Reed there to discuss federal level issues. And because that's where the Rhode Island school committees would sort of come together in some ways, rather than it being as granular, it's one district request.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that we, like, acid to come, just us, just, but yeah, that's what I was wondering.
And that's why this agenda is, just, just to talk to our local folks, because they're sitting at the table, but through RIASK is the best way to sort of discuss anything.
Yeah, yeah, I think with so many, I just, I guess I have a constant eye on, on ear or ear eye both, I guess, to how changes at, constant shifts and, I'd say uncertainty at the federal level are going to necessitate changes that we're going to want and need at the state level, when funding comes and goes and rules come and go, that where are protections at the, um, at the state level?
And I imagine just my opinion is probably influence might be greater at the state level versus the individual district. Ms. Reese.
I just wanted to add on to what you were saying about like the federal stuff. Because I think paying, well, paying attention to requests for Medicaid reforms, it's so intimately tied to, to special ed and funding. It might be an interesting point for us to, to sort of explore. Because I know there's a large push with all the medical, professional medical program or, um, advocacy groups that is, it's really behind and it could really benefit, I think, public schools if we did support and we were able to receive more monies for Medicaid reimbursement.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments related to this? Seeing none, we're going to pass it over to Ms. Carrie for the last two actions and we'll start with the memo draft of FY '25. If you don't have a computer in front of you, it has been updated towards the end of the day, but I think if you want to give us a once over and then we have some more information that we can look at a little deeper later.
So exciting. We have a surplus. Um, I'm expecting $170,000 this year in surplus. And just kind of to kind of go into what is causing this. And the good thing is our approved education aid came in about $319,000 higher this year. We also received more money on interest and earnings in our investment account with our general fund. And then our Medicaid reimbursements were about $100,000 higher than expected. And one of the other large driving factors here is that when EBEK was sold, we got $250,000 from that sale, which was great for us and for the district as well. Kind of highlighting some of the tuitions. So we do have some outstanding invoices. Some of those are DCYF, some of the charter schools that we're still working with to try and get down those. Um, but at this point, those are the ones that are unpaid. And then so special ed out of district tuitions are 216,000 and total transportation costs are, were $447,000 over budget. And those were related again to out of district special ed tuition and transportation costs.
So is it slightly accurate in their way to kind of lump the two together one way or the other? Or is it, because like, it's not like that our transportation contract went over by that amount. They're kind of tied in the same, right? With out, out of district placement alongside it goes with transportation. So that's essentially what we're seeing.
Yes, yeah.
But you're categorizing them in two separate line items because that's just the appropriate accounting thing to do.
And remember statewide transportation is kind of out of our control.
No, we understand that. Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments related to that? I'll simply say a surplus is great, so appreciate it. By my count, that's two years in a row. Thank you very much. And then again, if there are any other questions related to the numbers that came in, we can also talk about them. Moving forward, actually, I just had a quick question. Um, you referenced an investment account associated with the general fund. Is that separate than like the investment related to a ban?
Yes, yes. So we have our own general fund. I have an investment account. We get 4% on that. So that's where you see those interest on earnings every year.
Okay, so essentially right now you're managing two separate investment accounts. Is that correct?
Re now.
Thank you. And next and final action will just be the review of our standard monthly financial reports, which will deal with our financial report and variance analysis, which is Jeff's generally just the monthly, our PMA Perkins payments and our ban statement, which has a new ban on it as well. So take it away.
All right. So our current expenditures, um, as of August 31st were about $4 million. I didn't highlight anything in the memo. I had highlighted last month, some of those one time expenses that came out. And as things do occur, I will highlight them in the memo, but as of this month, we didn't have any expenditures that were larger that I would want to point out to you. Moving on to the Perkins Eastman and PMA statement, I included two extra, um, bills from Perkins and PMA. And again, once we close out the ban, the original ban that we had, I will then start a new memo and I can include the total of stage one and the stage two related costs that we had in this. As you can see, we still have about 1.3 million left in our, um, the ban that we originally had. And then now you see the 85 million, which I have not touched yet, which is just building capital and interest until we pay the contractor rate, which will be very soon. Please wait.
Thank you. Does anyone have any specific questions related to this? Well, thank you very much. I would like to get a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.